So, our speaker today is Pat Sledge. And, you know, she sent me a bio. Okay, you can all see that. You know, when, when, when we work together with people, we just sort of say, oh yeah, that's Pat. You know, she's good, she's competent, she's on, on, on town council in Spencer. Isn't that wonderful? But what we don't realize is that each one of these people has a, a, a life and something that brought them to this point of, of service. So let me just highlight a few of the things on, on, on Pat's bio. Her family dates back to the 1760s in East Rowan, the Michael Brown family. Okay, so she's seventh generation Rowan County person. She filed in 2019 and won, along with a bunch of other folks, some of whom are on, on the meeting this morning. But she's also served as a state president of North Carolina Business and Professional Women. Wow, holding state office. You know, powerful woman in, among powerful women here in the state and worked on their legislative program. And she's currently connected with their board of directors of their foundation. She has also served two-year term as treasurer of the ERA North Carolina Alliance. I knew she was concerned about getting ERA done, et cetera. But I didn't know that you held office in, in, in that organization. And, and that, that's wonderful. Dottie was clapping because way, in, in, in a few prior years ago, she was marching for ERA in the city of Chicago. You know, but back in the, oh God, I guess that was the late 60s. This sort of thing's been going on a long time. So, so we're glad to see that you're carrying that torch on today and see if we can, you know, get it passed here, which will push on for, for the whole state. And she's on the, the board of the Ruby Organization, which is a group that works to stop human trafficking. She's owned a business, she's been part of advertising and marketing. Oh, oh, yeah, and, and, and for all of you who are into Mary Kay, you know, she knows Mary Kay and, and, and that, that kind of stuff. Comes from a family of involvement, a father was volunteer fireman and fire commissioner, mother 4-H leader, you know, that, that strikes Dottie, I'm sure, very, very warm because Dottie grew up with a mother who was a leader in, in 4-H as well. This is the stuff that goes into a person. And here she is, this, this leader, this peacemaker, this listener, this problem solver, this great grandma, and the, the one who has a boss in her house. His name is Charlie, he has four feet and he's real cute. And, and you can put, put that up on, on the, the website, on the Facebook page, Pat. So that, that, that's something, Pat is more than face, more than just a councilperson. This is Pat Sledge, we're proud to have you with us and be part of this, Pat. Take it away.
Thank you, Jeffrey. I said, I, I know my bio gets long and I said, yeah, I was born here, grew up here, left here, came back here, ran for office, won, and I'm here to serve. I've been asked, why should women run for office? And the reason for that is that women make great leaders. We're willing to ask hard questions, even if we're concerned it might be showing a weakness. We're caring, compassionate, and when it comes to seeing both sides of a situation, we're mediators and generally, I think, look for the best solution for all people involved. We're listeners, we have good ideas, even when the men around us co-op our ideas and take them as their own. We're able to fit in more because we've been doing it all of our lives. If we, if you have a family, if you have children, if you have animals, you know that it takes a tremendous amount of energy to fit everything in, but we've been doing it all of our lives. And so we can usually find a place to put one more thing in. Many of us are able to see the big picture, but pay, and pay attention to details. Women are creative thinkers and we make good decisions when we have all the facts. I bought a T-shirt from a BPW member in the mid 80s from a woman down east. I cannot remember her name, but I think she was from Edenton and she was a mover and shaker in her community. I have that shirt still somewhere, but I had a new one done with a slight modification when a group of us wore them to, on a trip to Washington DC in 2015. Here's what it says. Women make great leaders and governors, lieutenant governors, treasurers and secretaries of state, and teachers, social workers, service providers, counselors and volunteers, and businesswomen, consultants, artists, writers, musicians and broadcasters, computer programmers and engineers, and commissioners and supervisors, city council and school board members, and mayors, clerks and trustees over presidents, senators, congresswomen and campaign workers, and legislators, and nurses, doctors, attorneys and judges, firefighters, law enforcement and military personnel, athletes and managers and lovers and wives, mothers and grandmothers, and pro-choice, pro-women activists and, and informed voting American citizens. Women make great leaders. When my elected representative asked me if it would be okay if she didn't bother to reply to my calls or messages since we were never going to see eye to eye, I had a passing thought at some point that I could do a better job than that. And I realized that elected officials are supposed to listen to their constituents, even if they do have differences of opinion. This woman was formerly a social worker and an animal rescue specialist. I remember thinking it was a shame that she cared more about animals than for the humans that she represented. Represented, I did not seriously consider running for office. I've worked as a volunteer for other campaigns in the past, letter writing to get out the vote, door-to-door canvassing, voter registration drives, phone bags, and contributing to campaigns for causes I believed in. Many years ago, I met a longtime member of the North Carolina House of Representatives and worked with her on a grassroots effort to get increased funding for Medicaid kids with HIV/AIDS. We were successful in getting that legislation passed. That legislator was Ruth Moss Easterling, and we met in a bathroom at a BPW convention. She is credited with starting the Head Start Program for North Carolina, as well as the Commission for the Status Own Women. My BPW experience with advocacy and North Carolina Women United lobbying at our state Capitol and a couple of trips to Washington DC got me involved and kept me tuned in to state and national politics. But I never paid much attention to local elections and government other than doing my homework for local candidates before the primaries. I got involved with my precinct when I moved to Spencer and was invited to an organizing meeting. When the secretary was not able to attend a meeting, I stepped into the role of precinct secretary. It wasn't long after that that a couple of the local Democrats started trying to convince me to run for the Board of Aldermen in Spencer. I did not know what an alderman even did at that time, and I thought it was probably a volunteer position. But since I had retired in May of, of 2019, I thought I'd at least ask around. I have several good friends through BPW, Business of Professional Women, who are elected officials, one at the state level, a county commissioner and a town councilwoman in a small town about the size of Spencer, Red Oak, North Carolina. The late Barbara Hightower was the one who could give me the answers I needed about what I was about to get myself into. She sent me the manual for the North Carolina Democratic Party, which about made me have second thoughts. But I soon found out that I didn't have to know everything about the state. Let's see, I have a slide here if I can show it. Well, maybe I can, maybe I can't. Well. Maybe I just won't show the slide. Pardon? I did the share screen. Oh, okay. This, this screen shows the the layout of the council of manager size, style of government that is what is done for the citizens of Spencer. The citizens are our bosses and then we're, we represent the, or represent them as the mayor and board of aldermen with the town manager answering directly to us and the town attorney as our advisor. And then our town manager is in charge of the town clerk, the finance department, planning, special projects, fire, police and public works. In a council manager form of government, the manager's powers and duties are set by state law. The council has no authority to modify the manager's powers, except perhaps to add those to those listed in the statutes. And administrators' power, on the other hand, are delegated by the council and can be defined, modified, or even completely eliminated in the council's discretion. And you'll see that a little bit later, I think I'll show you that most of the, most of the municipalities and cities in Rowan County are set up as the council manager style of government. So now how do I go back, Ken? Newspaper articles had been appearing for a few months prior to my nudge to run for office, outlining some bickering, infighting and name-calling among the sitting aldermen. And there had been one resignation and visits by the NAACP over this dismissal of a relatively new town manager. The town appeared to be a hot mess and primed for new direction. So I filed for election along with 11 other citizens hoping to win one of the six seats. We would have a new mayor and just one of the incumbents elected. I think many people were surprised when a new, when as a newcomer, not only to Spencer, but to politics was elected. How did I do it? I first went to a number of the local businesses and residents and asked them what was right with Spencer and gave them a chance to tell me what needed to change. I took a look at the town website and tried to learn as much as possible about the stated beliefs submission for the town and built my campaign around the concerns that I encountered. It's always been my philosophy that if you don't vote, you can't complain. But even further, if you don't like what you see, do what you can to fix it. My slogan became, "Get involved, you live here." And I handed out lots of buttons I had made with that message. I designed a brochure and ran it by my precinct leaders for their input. And last week, Jeffrey told me that they had held on to my brochure as an example of what a brochure should be. I left copies of that brochure everywhere I could leave them and joined several other candidates and walked the streets of Spencer on a couple of Saturdays, knocking on doors with the candidate who would be elected our mayor. And I advocated for a candidate's forum for the town. To prepare for our Spencer candidate forum, I attended several that were held throughout the county for other races to have a feel for what to expect when my time came. I learned from another BPW member who has run for office and is currently seeking running for a seat on the Greensboro City Council, my friend and campaign treasurer, Tracy Furman, that I could get a list of registered voters from the county board of elections. I requested that list from Spencer and sorted it by party affiliation and gender and wrote a personal postcard to every woman who was listed as an independent. I thought that I had a shot with the registered Democrats and that these women could give me, could maybe give me the, the key that gave me an edge. I was able to speak for a few minutes at our monthly breakfast meeting of the Rowan County Dems just before the election. It didn't hurt that I was a native daughter of Rowan County and had maintained some local contacts even while living in neighboring Davidson County before moving to Spencer. My campaign literature consisted of a brochure, the buttons I mentioned earlier, two car magnets, one for each side of my car, and an order of yard signs, which some of our precinct members helped me to put up in strategic location, some really cheap business cards and the blank postcards. I ran an ad in the local newspaper, which ran in a special election section, and then again on Sunday before the Tuesday election in November. In full disclosure, I spent $917.88 plus the filing fee of $5 for the town of Spencer. And filing fees vary across positions and locations. Each campaign is required to have a treasurer, but the candidate can serve in that capacity. And I completed the online training from the state board of elections. But then my friend Tracy offered to serve as my treasurer. I made a pledge to keep my spending under $1,000 and I did say. I received $210 in contributions, $50 from my sister, another 50 from a cousin in Nashville, Tennessee, $100 from a cousin in Mecklenburg County, and a $10 bill from one of those unaffiliated ladies to whom I'd written a postcard. The balance of my expenses were a loan from myself. So if you think you can do a better job than someone who is in office in your area, go for it. Get involved with the local party. If there isn't a precinct in your area, talk to the chair of your party at the county level and see what you can do to get a group organized. Jeffrey's waving at me. Volunteer at your county meetings to get some name recognition. They're always looking for volunteers for help. Look around you and see if you can find something that you would like to see changed and then talk to your friends and the people in your community to build a base. Learn as much as you can about the role of the job you want to get elected to. All meetings of the towns and committees are public meetings by law, except for a couple of topics that must be disclosed and must be discussed in closed meetings. So sit in on council meetings and watch how things are done in your area. The School of Government and the North Carolina League of Municipalities offer training to help newly elected officials understand more about their role in local government. Municipal candidates will be more effective board members if they understand the services and that the cities and towns may provide their own roles and responsibilities and the legal requirements for public officials. Our interim town manager in Spencer held an orientation session for all municipal candidates vying for office, so everyone had the same information about what the city or town does. As one of six aldermen or alderwomen in Spencer, we serve with a mayor who runs for that seat. In some communities, the mayor is selected from the elected board members. Our terms are currently set for two-year terms. We're recognizing that many of the projects we've started or put into plan will not come, be completed in our terms. So we and Spencer are investigating changing our town charter to, in order to have longer terms and perhaps staggered terms. If that passes in a referendum, it will not impact the current board of aldermen, but it can be helpful to future town officials. This slide talks just a little bit about the responsibility of, of municipal officials. We have to look at the financial perspective, the internal process, the customer's perspective, and then learning and growing with our knowledge of what needs to be done to serve our constituents better. We're the group that sets the policies for the town. Working with the area council governments, we interviewed and hired a new town manager. The town manager has specific roles spelled out by the state legislator. It's our role to work with him or her to accomplish the projects that need to be done for the community while spending the money coming in responsibly. We answer to the citizens who are our bosses and we take their phone calls. It's important to learn what your town is responsible for, the services that are supported by taxpayer money. Early in our terms, we organized a community event held at the local high school and invited the 3,200-plus citizens to come and tell us what they wanted for Spencer. We had breakout groups who talked about community events, housing, recreational activities, economic development, schools and more. With that citizen input, we've set an agenda for the town. Our mayor Jonathan Williams has asked that each of the aldermen serve as a liaison to various groups. I attend and follow meetings of the Rowan County Commissioners, the Economic Development Council, the Chamber of Commerce and our planning committee. I also attend some meetings of the North Carolina League of Municipality and do a great deal of reading from the North Carolina School of Government. And I help the town clerk by proofreading minutes of our meeting. The commitment of time spent in meetings and learning opportunities is a bit more than I expected, but I will file for reelection in early July and do my best to retain a seat on the board of aldermen. And yes, I did learn that the board of aldermen is not truly a volunteer position, but I don't count on the small amount I receive monthly as a part of my budget. So if you have any interest at all in running for office, here are the openings that will be elected in November of this year in Rowan County. Salisbury has a seat open for mayor and four council members. China Grove has three council seats. Cleveland has an opening for mayor and three commissioners. East Spencer has an opening for mayor and three alderman seats. Faith has five alderman seats available. Granite Corey has a mayor and two alderman seats. Conapolis has a mayor and three council seats. Landis has two alderman seats. Rockwell has a mayor and five alderman seats. And Spencer has a mayor and six alderman seats. The filing fees range from $5 to, I believe, $60. I can't see, can't see my slide. But I believe that, I believe the most expensive seat is the mayor in, in Conapolis. And those are, those are decided by the local government as to the amount of the filing fee and then approved by the board of elections. So I would encourage you to get out there, get involved. It is your community, you live here. And if you see something that you think needs to be changed, do something about it. It's a rewarding experience, it's a challenging experience, and I've learned so very much in the year and a half that I've been here. So I hope that I have done the citizens of Spencer enough of a job that they will consider voting for me again. Thank you very much for this opportunity. If you have other questions, I'll see if I can answer them. Jeffrey, Jeffrey is muted.
And now he's unmuted, so he can, he can speak. Thank you, Pat. Excellent job and, and just basic information. As, as we're starting to roll into questions, if you have a question, you might want to put it in chat. I, I have a question for you as, as we're getting started here. As you shifted from just being a active, involved citizen to being on, on, you know, the, the town council, what did that feel like? What was that change inside for you?
Well, it was a very humbling experience to have run for office and to be elected for the first time out. I beat my closest appointment by just nine votes. So maybe those postcards that I mailed to unaffiliated voters made a difference. It was a little, little frightening to begin with because like I said, I didn't really know very much about the role of an alderman before I made the decision to file. But with the help of, help from my friend down east, you know, she kind of ran through the, the roles of the things that they do down there. And being that the town was about the same size as Spencer, I felt like that was probably, you know, a close, a close idea of what I was getting myself into. It's, it's rewarding. You feel like you have responsibility to the, to the, to the citizens and that I weigh every decision that I make carefully. I try to do my homework prior to our board meetings. I ask a lot of questions and sometimes that gets me in trouble because our meetings can run very long. But I feel like often if I have a question about something, our citizens may have the same question. And so it makes sense for me to ask.
Let's see, Ken, can you work the unmute thing? I think Eileen Hansen-Kelly had the first question that I saw in chat. Can we hear that from Eileen?
Who said he'd answered that question, Jeff?
Oh, okay, technical question. So we go to our, our technical staff person, Ken, tell us.
Mayor is appointed, China Grove elected there in 2019 before your term.
Can't hear you.
I cannot unmute or whatever.
Okay. Let me, is it at the very beginning of the chat where? Oh, the Faith mayor is appointed.
2019 before your term.
And the China Grove and Landis elected their, their mayors for four-year terms in 2019.
Okay, so there, there's some, some specific reasons within each jurisdiction, which may modify and change that. And, and this is the first year that the city of Salisbury will be electing a mayor apart from being a, elected as part of the city council. Let's see, Al Higgins, you know, had, had a question. Can we unmute Al, please?
Yes, hey, good morning. Pat, great job. Thank you for that very thorough presentation. It was great, excellent. Can you talk a little more though about, you know, the statutory powers that are given to city managers and the difference between that and duties that councils can assign to city managers? And also talk a little more about the responsibility of the council in terms of oversight of the staff that report to them?
Let me see if I can get this right. In the town council manager form of government, the council elects or the, the council hires the manager and the manager's duties are spelled out by the general statutes. And, and he is responsible, in our case, it's a male, and he is responsible for the staff and hiring and managing the supervisory staff. The council members, or in our case, the aldermen, really don't have anything to do with that. We can make recommendations, but, but he has that authority that we have invested or we have vested in him through, through his hiring. With the administrators, the administrators' role has a lot more, let me think just a minute about that. Let me look back at my slide here just a minute. Kind of quickly those slides. This was information that I took from the North Carolina School of Government. The difference in the, between a manager and administrator in a council manager form of government, the manager's powers and duties are set by state law, general statutes 168, 148. The council has no authority to modify the manager's powers, except perhaps to add those listed and, add to those listed in the statute. Administrators' power, on the other hands, are delegated by the council and can be defined, modified, or even eliminated in the council's discretion. We serve at the pleasure of the, of the state of North Carolina. And as towns and cities and municipalities and, and villages, we are obligated to, and I've got some notes here somewhere, I'm not sure whether I, whether I've got that with me or not, but the, the state of North Carolina can actually revoke a town's charter. And in 1971, there were about 95 town charters, town communities or villages who had their charters revoked. That was primarily because of inactivity. There were little towns, little communities that had been incorporated, but then were inactive. But we also have a responsibility to the local government commission to operate in a fiduciary manner with, and we're over, with oversight by the state treasurer. And in that case, a council can also, or a town can also be, can lose its charter. And in that case, um, a council can also, or a town can also be, um, can lose its charter. Um, I don't have the specifics about what the administrator's powers are or the, um, manager's powers are, but it is general statute one sixty A, one forty eight. So, um, that kind of halfway answers your question now.
Uh, yes, and, and I, I put something in the chat. I, I think that what I'm concerned about is that I don't want citizens to, to leave this, this presentation thinking that the city manager, um, does not answer to the elected board, uh, because the elected board does have the authority for the oversight for the city manager. So, no, we certainly can't change anything, uh, that's put out in the statute that's legislatively supported. Uh, but as councils, we, we can give directives to our city managers about what we want to see them do and what we want them to carry out. Uh, because I don't want people to leave this conversation thinking that that power structure is actually flipped, that the city manager has the power over the council, because that's absolutely not true. Uh, the council certainly does give directives to its city managers, uh, in this council manager form of government. Uh, and, and we have oversight, you know, of that city manager, and we're responsible for evaluating, uh, that.
Absolutely.
That's all. I just wanted to make sure that people understand that. Um.
Thank you for that clarification. You're exactly, you're exactly right. At our last meeting, uh, our town manager presented a budget to us, and, uh, we were able to take a look at it and, um, decide that there were things there that we didn't agree with, and we negotiated some changes to it. You know, we, we don't want to micromanage that manager's job, but at the same time, you're right, we do have oversight and the ability to, uh, make recommendations for change. And, and if, if some reason, you know, the manager's not doing the job he needs to do, he can be removed by the council. So thank you for that clarification.
Right, and, and for those of you who aren't aware, uh, Al Higgins, um, for former mayor and mayor for the town of Salisbury, serves on as council. And Tamara Sheffield, who's also, uh, on this morning, is on city council here in Salisbury as well. And, and then the, uh, the whole Spencer contingent is here to, uh, to be supportive of, uh, Pat and your presentation today. Do we have other questions? To, uh, in general or specific?
How many hours? Um, I was, uh, I was asked, how many hours do I put in, um, as, uh, an alderman? Which is a good question. Um, we typically, I mean, we have some scheduled meetings each month. We have, um, a pre-agenda meeting and a board meeting that are, uh, required that we attend. Those typically, um, can run as much as three hours, uh, in an evening. We try to streamline those as much as possible. So, you know, overall, I would say, count on maybe six hours in meetings. But then we also may have other things that we do. I, I mean, as I said to you, uh, I sit in on a number of other meetings. So, uh, our planning board, for the last six months, we have worked a great number of hours to get our new, um, zoning maps taken care of and, and the, the changes that are mandated by the state for the, um, one sixty D, which has to do with land use. Um, so my commitment for the last year has been significantly more than six hours a month. I also attend, um, the Rowan County Economic Development Commission meetings as a part of, um, just being a liaison to, to hear about anything that we need to be aware of as far as Spencer is concerned or economic development across, across the county. And that's usually about a two-hour meeting a month. Um, I don't always catch all the county commissioners' meetings, um, but I try to listen in on those when I can, um, just to see if there are things that we need to be aware of for Spencer that the county commissioners may be discussing. So it's, it's, um, it leaves me enough time to get myself into some trouble, but not a lot.
I think you also mentioned that, that your mayor has assigned you to relate to different, um, areas of concern within Spencer. So there, there is council liaison to different sections, departments, or, or, uh, boards, or, or committees. And, and that, that's true probably to greater or lesser extent, depending upon which town council, uh, you, you are a member of.
That's true. We have, uh, we have one council person who is, um, pretty much in charge with the events and, and things that are going on, um, you know, in, for the community involvement. Uh, we have another, uh, alderman who is involved with, uh, the schools. Uh, we have, uh, one who is involved with, uh, community appearance and, uh, the historical. We have someone who is assigned to the Historical Preservation Committee. We have, um, trying to think, um, minute, the municipal, municipal planning for the county. Um, one of our aldermen attends those meetings. So we have, and, and then, of course, our mayor, uh, attends, uh, state meetings as well as, uh, community meetings of all kinds. So we, we try to keep ourselves informed and try to be sure that we're, um, serving our community to the best of our ability.